Good evening, everybody. It's seven o'clock. We just returned from executive session for the purpose of discussing strategies with respect to collective bargaining as it relates to Wilmington Police Supervisors Union Association in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, three. With that, I'd like to take a roll call of our members here. It's starting this end.
Kevin Kyra here.
Jacob Guewer here.
Lili Maselli here.
Frank West.
With that, would everybody please stand and salute the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion to review and sign payroll bill and bill's payable warrants out of session?
So moved.
Second. So moved, second. Is there?
Jake.
Jake, okay. Is there any discussion? That being said, all in favor? Five zero. Our first appointment, we have Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation regarding Princeton Properties Forty-B Housing Development Local Regulatory and Use Agreement. Welcome.
Good evening, Valerie Gingrich, Director of Planning and Conservation. You may have noticed that Princeton Properties Development is under construction at the corner of Middlesex and Jefferson Ave, Jefferson Road. That's going to be 108 units, and 20% of those, or 22 units, are going to be rented as affordable units. That development was financed through Mass Housing. So the developer and Mass Housing have what's called a regulatory agreement that they both signed, and that regulatory agreement governs those affordable units. So it requires that the affordable units exist, and it goes into details like the developer has to give a year-long lease to a tenant, and they have to keep the property in good physical condition. They have to do income certification. So it goes through all the details of how to manage those affordable units. It also goes into some of the financial aspects with Mass Housing and the developer. That agreement has a term of 30 years. So obviously, the town is interested in what happens after those 30 years. So what's before you tonight is a local regulatory agreement that was drafted with a lot of the same things as the other regulatory agreement, but this one would kick in after those 30 years are up and would automatically take the place of it so that those affordable units would remain affordable in perpetuity. So we're basically planning ahead tonight for after those 30 years. Same, you know, same requirements and some of the same details, but just an automatic thing that's put in place before you to sign. And I can answer any questions that you have.
Is there anyone, any board members have a question?
I have a quick question.
No.
Assuming this would, if they were to sell to another person, obviously, this would stay in place?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Would anybody enter into a motion to sign this agreement?
So moved.
Mr. DePalma sign, Mr. Kyra second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? That was quick.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas. Okay. A little ahead, but we have Christine, excuse me, Canavari, President Board of Directors Regarding Proposal, requesting town financial support of the Wilmington, at the Wilmington Farmers Market. Good evening. Could you state your name for the record?
Yes, Christine Canavari, I'm president of the Board of the Wilmington Farmers Market Association. Wanted to, I'm also joined by another board member, Christine Naridi. And we just wanted to come before you this evening with this proposal. Ultimately, it's a proposal to be included on the town budget for financial support of the market. We'd like to start just by recognizing and thanking you all for the continued support of our market and the, through the use of the townlands and the partnerships that we've created with a variety of other town departments. So thank you for your support over the years. As you all know, this is our 15th season. This is our largest opening ceremonies to date. Of course, we had a lot of the support of you all in the room here, along with the Wilmington High School Band and, you know, just general wonderful celebration. Over the past few years, we've really had to come back from what, you know, really took us down with the, with the, with COVID. It was, we were able to maintain our market throughout all of the pandemic, but once we regained, we've really, we've created some incredible momentum. So from, over the past couple of years, we've increased our total vendors per week by 36%, our total attendees per week by 73%, and our special events now are up 33% since 2023. In this recent expansion, we've been able to hire a year-round market manager, not full-time, but year-round. We've had three new board members just this past year. And one of the wonderful things about the increased size of our board is that we're now able to start focusing on the youth in our community with this board expansion. We include weekly live music, crafts for kids, and this new pop club that we'll tell you about in just a second. There are special events throughout every season now, including the very popular Pet Parade, Christmas in July, Harvest Fest, and many more events throughout the season. We've created a lot of new community partnerships in the past couple of years, including Wilmington Celebrates, the Festival of Trees we've participated in for the second year this weekend, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Welcome to Wilmington Night. We've also created, through additional partnerships that I'll share in a moment, distribution of these referral cards that are specifically for our community members with food insecurities. And then just recently, we've had our first two winter markets hosted at the Senior Center, and we have one more to go before the year is out. In 2023, we applied for and were the recipients of a grant from Winchester Hospital's Community Benefits Program. This grant was specifically to address food insecurities in our town, and it also does include some surrounding towns. We, through that grant, we were able to match the sponsor, sorry, the SNAP benefits for a number of our community members. Each week, we have members of the community that will swipe their SNAP card with us, and so it debits from their SNAP account, and then we match that money weekly. So in essence, doubles their food budget, their healthy food budget. It also, so what we do then is give them market cash, and they are able to use that market cash at all of the SNAP-approved vendors at the market. So it allows them to shop for a variety of items, not just groceries. And then the referral cards that I mentioned, this was in an effort to increase the ability for others in the community that may not have SNAP benefits. We know that there's a lot of folks that either don't know that they qualify for SNAP or they just haven't gone through the process of applying for it. So this is an easy way for folks that do not have a SNAP debit card to also take advantage of an additional $20 every other week. And those cards are given out through our partnership with the Food Pantry, the Wilmington Senior Center, and the Veterans Affairs Department, and those groups, and also Where One Wilmington. So those groups give out these referral cards to anyone that they deem qualified and in need of, or have, or experiencing food insecurities. Our SNAP program impact is a total of 13,000, almost 14,000 over the past three years, and that, this year was, also included those referral cards. It's, in addition to, you know, the financial benefit that there, that we're receiving from that grant from Winchester Hospital, there's also a lot of our own resources that go into the administration of this program. There's, you know, just alone, the SNAP transactions and the training of our volunteers and our market manager. It's a lot of time and effort and funding. And then the newest thing that we've introduced this year was a program called Pop Club. This is a kids' program, and it's for 3- to 12-year-olds. It encourages them to engage directly with our farmers. We give them $3 in Pop Club, Pop Bucks each week. They come back week after week, they sign in, they do a craft or an activity, and then they can spend those $3 on purchasing healthy food from our farmers. So throughout the season, they were, in 2025, we, they were spent, they spent over $2,000 with our farmers. They, we had an average of 43 kids per week engaged in this program, and throughout the season, we had almost, you know, the large majority of our youth that participated, they checked in with us multiple times throughout the season. So it was a really successful program. This was fully funded by the Farmers Market this year. So what we're faced with now is a pretty big funding challenge. That three-year grant cycle ended October 2025, and Winchester Hospital has not opened that Funding Benefits Program back up. They anticipate being able to open it up at the beginning of 2026, but they're not confident that they'll be fully funded this year for the three more, or for the next three-year cycle. We've gone after, in anticipation of that, we've gone after additional grant funding and have been denied just due to the big pool of competition for seeking out grant funding. So what we're finding ourselves at risk right now is these food access programs being challenged by the lack of funding that we currently have. We've also increased our operational costs with the addition of the winter market, which the community's had a great response to. That means that we're now paying our market manager year-round instead of just, you know, nine months or so, or eight months or so. The Senior Center has operational costs along with it, so we do experience, after each market, we do receive a bill for the janitorial costs and services. And then with the expansion of our market in general, we've expanded who we're reaching through the SNAP program, through the Kids Club, and then through this referral card. So with more people using these benefits, it's, of course, coming with a larger budget. We do want to maintain these expanded programs now that we've set this precedence of being able to match SNAP funds and be able to fund SNAP in general. We want to make sure that we can continue to offer those services. We've become known as a place where people can go to when they do find themselves in need, and through those partnerships that we've created with the Food Pantry, the Senior Center, WOW, et cetera. And then we also would really like to continue this year-round presence. So right now, we're just, we've, we're operating three winter markets. We would really like to expand that to include at least one month in the non-summer market season. So that could be, you know, upwards of four to five months of indoor markets, which, of course, is increased costs. So what we're requesting is consideration to be added to the town budget. We're requesting $7,500 annually, and this contribution from the town would allow us this year-round expansion utilizing the Senior Center. It would support the continuance of the food insecurity services that we outlined, and it would really add strength to what we consider to be a real Wilmington cornerstone, this market. With, you know, we, to be able to have a solid budget line item that covers these services in this expansion each year allows us to go out and, you know, seek private community funding for all of the other programs that we offer, the above and beyond, we call it, our special events, our live music, the things that really make the market a fun and enjoyable place to visit week after week. So with that, I would love to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, well, certainly, thank you very much for your presentation. Any questions from our board members? Okay. I guess one of the questions that I'll ask is that you said that you're, right now, you're using the Town Common eight months out of the year, I think it is?
Yeah, we're there June through October.
Okay, yeah. And then back again the following June, so there's like three months that you're not in business, so to speak.
Right, so right now, we're considering ourselves in business through December of this year.
Yep.
So six full months this year with the addition of those winter markets.
And by your presentation, it looks like you're looking to cease using the Common and use the Senior Center all 12 months out of the year, is that the?
No, no, we would continue using the Town Common during the normal summer season. I think everybody is very pleased with the use of the Town Common. We've had a lot of success there. The vendors love it, the community loves it. We've had a lot more exposure, you know, where traffic is seeing us from the both roads, not just Church Street, or not just Middlesex.
Right. And as far as the grant from Winchester, you're not sure if that's going to happen or not, and?
Yeah.
Do you have a date that you'll?
They're anticipating opening up their grant portal in January, and they anticipate being able to send out responses by May. So we'll know in May if we'll be eligible for that funding, if we're approved for that funding.
Okay, so your funding has ended?
It has ended, as of October.
Okay, okay. And if the town doesn't come up with this, what's the, what's the plan B, I guess, is probably the?
My, my suggestion to our board would be that we utilize private sponsorships for funding of the food insecurity programs and, which would replace our entertainment budget, our special event budget. You know, I wouldn't replace our marketing budget because we need that to keep the people coming. So that would be our plan B, is the private sponsorships that we receive would go towards the food insecurity program.
Okay, yeah, because I know, you know, I've been to the Farmers Market numerous times. I've actually participated as a community spot there as well, so I thank you for all of the stuff that you're doing with the Farmers Market. And, and again, it's been expanded. You can see that there's more vendors there in current, you know, the current couple of years than there were in the past, so that's always a good thing.
Yeah.
And the, the Senior Center, it seems like that was a good take. I was there for that and?
Been very successful at the Senior Center. It's, I mean, the facility's beautiful, so we look forward to hopefully being able to continue that. I think, you know, if we were, if we were forced to be in a position where we have to use private sponsorship dollars to continue kind of the base services that we have, it kind of ceases our growth. And doesn't mean it's forever, but it would be, I think, for now, we would, we would find ourselves in a position where we almost have to take a step back and, you know, remove some of those elements that make the Farmers Market as fun and exciting as it is.
So the bulk of the 7,500 is the doubling of the SNAP benefits? Is that a lot of the?
So, yeah, it's the SNAP benefits, matching funds, and then it would be the operational cost for the year-round use of, or not year-round, the additional months at the Senior Center, the off, I would call it the off-season.
Okay. Any comment, any other comments from the board? Okay, well, I guess, thank you very much. Well, I guess we'll take it under advisement and go from there. I don't think there's a, there's no board to consider on this for, for the evening, so.
Okay, great.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, much appreciated. And our next appointment is Peter Walder, Waldesak, Decanted Wine Truck, request to obtain a one-day alcohol license to sell beer and wine at the Department of Elderly Services Holiday Program for a property located at 130 Main Street.
Yes, actually, it's Terry Marciello because?
I was gonna say, you don't look like Peter. Good evening, Terry.
Good evening, hi.
If you could just state your name for the record, so?
Terry Marciello, Director of Elderly Services.
Thank you.
So I'm actually here, he was unable to, to make it, so I thought I'd, due to a family, a family issue, so I thought I'd share a little bit about the event and, and share why we were asking for this. It's, believe it or not, it's this coming Thursday, it's December 11. We're having a holiday gathering. We use, this is our very first year to be able to have it at the new Senior Center. We're having 125 people for a sit-down dinner, baked, cooked right there at the Senior Center. And again, it's a, it's a nice, a very nice event, it's an evening event. So after seeing, in September, I purposely went to the event that was at the library for the Senior Center, at the Senior Center, when they did the?
Book.
The wine, wine and beer truck or cart there. I wanted to see how it worked, how people responded to it, and if had potential for us. And actually, I was very impressed with this company, so spoke to them, and so it'd be kind of the same setup, it'd be still, it would be two bartenders, they're tip-certified, sales-certified, just like before, I think it was C-12 catering license, they've been in business for four years. I did speak to the police chief, and he recommended that, he would send a letter saying it was like, okay. And then I didn't know if he would have a concern as to having an officer on the premises during the event, and officer of which alphas will, will be at the event. So, any questions?
Anything from the board?
Nope.
Okay.
My only concern was if there was going to be a police officer there, but you answered it, thank you.
And we have the appropriate?
Application?
Application?
Yep, the application is, is in, and we have the recommendation from the chief.
It was a positive recommendation, so there's no questions? Would you entertain a motion to grant the one-day liquor license?
So moved.
A wine and beer license, I should say.
So moved.
Second, any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ralph I.
At this time, I'd like to recognize, if you could step forward, sir, United States Air Force Airman Second Class Leonard Chaccio. Okay, we are running this out of order, I figure we take you here. Have a seat, please. First of all, sir, I'd like to, on behalf of the board and of the town, we'd like to thank you for your service, and I'd like to read a little bit about your service, if I may.
Thank you.
Okay, we, sir?
It was my honor to serve.
Well, it's our honor to have you here tonight. This is United States Air Force Airman Second Class Leonard Chaccio. Mr. Chaccio lived in Boston, Mass, and entered the, into service on April 16, 1956, in Boston, Mass. It's like, this is a life?
A life story, yeah.
You served for four years as an Intel Operations Specialist with the 4039th Strategic Wing, 8th Air Force, located at Griffiths Air Force Base in New York. You were later assigned to, reassigned to the 8th Air Force 820th Air Division on 5 January 1959, and then reassigned to the 8th Air Force 6th Air Division on April 1, 1961. Equipment was the US Air Force B-52s. You were honorably separated from service on April 15, 1960, from Griffiths Air Force Base in New York. Mr. Chaccio was awarded the Good Conduct Medal, Air Force Longevity Service Award, now known as the Air and Space Longevity, Longevity Service Award, 4039 SW Badge. Mr. Chaccio has lived in Wilmington since 1968 with your wife, with his wife Josie, raised two children, and has six grandchildren. On behalf of the town, if you could step forward, sir, I would like to present to you a salute to service. Kenny, watch out for the wise, watch out for the? If you could just sit, if you could just have a seat for a moment, maybe the board members might want to? And Tom, you might want to have a word.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I don't know if any of our board members would like to have a few words?
Lenny, I, I've known Lenny for, for, and his wife for quite a number of years as members of the Wilmington Sons and Daughters of Italy. A great contributor, he's always a volunteer, both he and his wife helped start our golf tournament 15 years ago. I want to thank you for your service to our country, and I know that that's just a small little citation, I guess, but it's meaningful and, and from, from me to you, thank you very much for everything that you do, your volunteer work in the community as well. Thank you.
I actually don't know you personally, but that is a very impressive record. Thank you for your service, great job.
Yes, thank you for your service, it's much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you very much for your service, sir.
This town is lucky to have a great veteran presence that we really respect and, and honor, and we're really proud to have you as one of those many veterans that still call Wilmington home, so thank you very much for all your service.
Yes, and thank you, sir. You're welcome to say something, you're welcome to?
I was just gonna say that 69 years ago today, it was in Dule, Greenland, it was 40,500, so it was a little cold.
Wow. I feel guilty for feeling cold.
That's what we had called, that's called.
We did take you a little out of order on our agenda, we figured you're welcome to stay for the balance of the meeting, you're welcome to enjoy evening at home.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, with that, Mr. Manager, communications, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the, the first communication is from the Manager's Office to the Finance Committee Department Heads and the Select Board. This is just a list of our Budget and Finance Committee meetings for the FY 2027 budget. You'll notice we're doing things a little bit differently this year. In the past, the Finance Committee has had meetings on Tuesdays and Thursday nights, especially through the bulk of February, to get in all the department reports. And so we're just be switching this to two Saturdays. So it's going to be the last Saturday in January and the first Saturday in February, where we're going to have the bulk of the departments present their budgets to the Finance Committee in an effort to, I think it'll be a little bit more efficient and allow some folks if, who, who are, you know, don't like to get out in the evenings, they could, they could come on a Saturday morning and if they wanted to watch or participate in those, in those, in those meetings. And so we'll see how that goes this year. So that is the communication. We also have a letter from Brett Sounen, the Recreation Director, who would like to thank the Wilmington Cricket Club for a donation of $1,000 that's set aside for financial support to register children for recreation programs. So that's a really great donation from the Cricket Club. And those are our, those are our communications.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Board to consider, we have a, consider approving drainage easements for, excuse me, these glasses are horrible, drainage easements, I'm getting new ones next week, so, for 8th and 11th Commonwealth Avenue, and turnaround easement for 8th Commonwealth Avenue. And I believe we have a, a little packet on that, if anybody has any questions for the manager, I guess, would be first, and then we can entertain a motion?
Yeah, so this is, this is pretty straightforward, as, as it said, drainage, drainage easements, and turnaround easement for this, this development that we require for public play.
Okay, is there a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second, second? Any discussion? All in favor? Mr. DePalmer?
Sorry.
That's okay. Just making sure. Five zero, thank you. We have another board to consider, request of John Romano, President of the Sons and Daughters of, Wilmington Sons and Daughters of Italy, to use the municipal parking lot in 4th of July Building for its annual Antique and Collector's Car Show on Sunday, October 18, 2026, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., with a rain date of Sunday, October 25, 2026.
So moved.
So a motion, second, is there any discussion? All in favor? Thank you very much. Another board to consider, approval of the 2026 licenses for alcoholic beverages, automatic amusement, Class 1 vehicle sales?
Oh, my apologies, my, my apologies. Looks just like the one before, I don't think so.
Right, my apologies. Board to consider, request of John Romano, excuse me, President Wilmington Sons and Daughters of Italy, to use the municipal parking lot in 4th of July Building for its yard sale fundraiser with the Wilmington Band Parents on Saturday, September 19, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. And back to, board to consider, approval of the 2026 licenses for alcoholic beverages, automatic amusement, Class 1 vehicle sales, Class 2 vehicle sales, common vicula, and entertainment. Says as, further described?
Yes.
Would you like to read through that, or?
Sure. Sure. So, I mean, we can, we can do them either one at a time or.
Probably group them.
As a group. So the, the, for alcohol beverages, all alcohol club would be Fordham Associates Incorporated, DBA, is Aleppo Temple and the Knights of Columbus. There's all alcohol package stores, which is Colonial Park Liquors on 35 Lowell Street, Eastgate Liquors, 211 J Lowell Street, Eli's Country Store at 381 Middlesex, Target at 210 Ballard Vale, and Wilmington Plaza Wine and Spirit at 258 Main Street. There's an all alcohol restaurant that includes the 99 Restaurant and Pub on Lowell Street, the Casablanca Mexican Restaurant on Main Street, Golden Ginger Restaurant on Main Street, Pacific Grove on Lowell Street, The Real McCoy on Lowell Street, the Red Heat Tavern on Lowell Street, Rocco's Restaurant on Main Street, and Temezzo on Lowell Street. And then we did not get a renewal request for Poncho's Cantina on Ballard Vale Street.
Why don't we take a, we'll take a motion on all of the all alcohol club, all alcohol package store, all alcohol restaurant liquor licenses.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? That said, I'll call for a vote. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Chair, so the next is for automatic amusements. So this is an automatic amusement for amusement device for K-1 Speed Incorporated for 24 separate devices. And this has a, the Wilmington recommends approval from the police chief. They are not renewing their billiard room tables, so just for that individual.
Okay. So is there a motion to grant for the automatic amusement license for K-1 Speed?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Misselli, second from Mr. Kyra. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you all.
I say this every year, Mr. Chair, that we should always get together over there at K-1 and have a race.
I would love that. That would be fine.
Every year I've said it, and we've never done it.
I say we do it.
We'll arrange that. Don't worry about it. The class, so the vehicle sales, class one and class two vehicle sales. We have class one vehicle sales at Cornerstone Automotive and Cornerstone Mitsubishi on Main Street, and McGovern Hyundai on Main Street. The class two vehicle sales are DJ's Auto Sales on Main Street, Forest Auto Repair on Main Street, Heavy Equipment Connection on Andover Street, Imperial Auto on Woburn Street, Triple Nickel Auto Body and Repair on Main Street, and ZNS Gas and Service on Main Street.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh. Thank you.
And last but not least, we have 38, well, not last but not least, we do have, we have entertainment after this. Common Vicular, I'm not going to put the addresses, I'll just read through. 99 Restaurant, AJ's Kitchen, Aleppo Temple, Burger King, Casablanca, China Walk, Code One BBQ, The Corner Store, Country Chef Restaurant, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 Dunkins. You know you've made it in Massachusetts when you get your 6th Dunkin'. EJ's, Frango's, Golden Ginger, Habit Burger, Josie's Bakery, K-1 Speed, the Knights of Columbus, Lynn Garden, McDonald's, The Real McCoy, Mona's Kitchen, Pacific Grove. Pizza Days did not submit their renewals, they are not on this list. Red Heat Tavern, Rizzo's Roast Beef and Pizza, Rocco's Restaurant, Summertime Super Beef, Starbucks, Two Starbucks, Target, Tremezo, Treza Pizzeria, Uncle John's Ice Creamery, and Wilmington's House of Pizza. And then there's another list of those that did not renew. Pizza Days came in very late as a non-renewal.
Is anyone but me not, not absolutely hungry after hearing that list? Is there a motion to approve the common vicula licenses as described by the manager?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh.
Now, last but not least, apologies, this is the entertainment licenses. So we have.
We'll get it after.
Casablanca, Code One BBQ, Pacific Grove, Red Heat Tavern, Rocco's Restaurant, and Tremezo. And again, Poncho's Cantina is not renewing.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the entertainment license as written by the manager? Mr. DePalmer? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Gierwoll? Any discussion? All said? All in favor? Five oh. So we have, we gave them, no, we got to do the.
Yeah, this is the.
Executing the alcohol.
Yep.
Okay. So we have a board to consider, executing the alcohol beverages control commission, 2026 seasonal population increase estimate, estimation form. Did you describe that at all?
Yeah. So this is a form, it's not really, this is mostly for Cape in the, you know, Cape and the Islands place that have seasonal residents. We don't estimate there would be a seasonal resident increase of anything, so our, we would be submitting this as zero.
Okay. So is there, you want a motion to approve this?
Just a motion.
Motion to approve this certification form?
Second.
Mr. DePalmer? Mr. Gierwoll? Is any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Board to consider issuing a Sunday entertainment license to K-1 Speed Incorporated.
So moved. Oh, sorry.
Nope. Forty Fordham Road.
So moved.
So moved. Ms. Misselli, Mr. DePalmer, is there any discussion? All in favor? Next. Notification, Town Manager, appointment to the Economic Development Committee?
Yeah. So they included the application, so Mr. Mark Gothier, I talked to him today, he's very excited about being a part of the Economic Development Commission. And so this is just a notification, we had one, one open slot, there was a manager position, so he will be filling that position.
Okay. Thank you.
Still one open spot, I believe, right?
Not, I think there may be.
There may be.
I think there's a person who's time to plugging stepping up, but I don't think they have yet.
And I believe it'll be your appointment.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I was like, I want to be ready.
Sorry. I took the last applicant, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. And finally, one last board to consider, it's discussion of Wilmington Select Board policy and procedures. Looks like Mr. Gierwoll put together a comprehensive policy and procedure. Would I like to take the floor?
Yeah. So when I first started, I asked, is there a handbook? Is there a set of rules? And the answer was no. So it's kind of hard when you come in and you don't know what's going on, and it's unwritten rules and everything. So then I looked at a lot of towns, they all seemed to have them, kind of created a straw man here, it's no, it's not to be voted on, it's not done, but just to kind of get what I saw is very common among other towns and what I've observed from us so far, and that the hope would be to get edits, amendments, run it by legal before we vote on it and then adopt it. So you guys all have it. Those, that's the background.
Okay. Is there any, we have discussions, so would anybody like to make some discussion points at all, or at least initial discussion points? Mr. Kyra?
Yeah. I, you know, I, I'm sure that other towns have policies and procedures, and I'm not opposed to having something like this, but I do think it needs to be, we do need to probably put a committee together.
Sure.
To take a look at it. People who are much wiser than I, I mean, I would suggest.
I was about to say, you should be the person to sort that command.
I would suggest that maybe the chair select one selectman, and that, that with consultation with the chair and the town manager, that additional former select persons be part of the committee. I mean, we have a lot of institutional knowledge out there with, with Mike Newhouse and a Mike McCoy and Lucy Maglia and Mike Shampoo, and I can go on Suzanne Sullivan, and so on and so forth, where those individuals may, may help with this policy and procedure. I, I went through it and, and I made a lot of notes, as you can see, as to what I think should or shouldn't be here. And I think getting that experience together, going through this, maybe getting some policies and procedures from other communities, as you did as well, and getting the policies and procedures that we have now for the Board of Selectmen, some that are in the inhabitant bylaw that we can pull from, and I'm sure that there are some policies and procedures, I don't know if Bev can dig them up, that we can go through and put something together. So that would be my suggestion, and, and, you know, it probably wouldn't realistically. It happened probably until sometime in February.
Sure.
With the holiday season, and then getting people together to do that, so.
Now, you suggesting that, you were saying that the chair appoint one member of the board, so obviously I'd want to garner interest and make a decision from there.
I would be interested in that, if that so be it, and then.
And then the, are you thinking that each member would appoint a potentially former select person?
No, no.
Or would you? No. Well, I would, I think that.
You would vet.
Myself, you, and Town Manager Slagle would get to together or discuss, or I could recommend individuals. I just named off, you know, six or seven real qualified people that, that could be on there. So.
Would the board be comfortable taking, taking a vote on the select, select board representative? I mean, I.
I have no issues with it.
I have no issue.
Yeah, I was going to say.
I just wanted to get the conversation started. That's what I'm saying.
No, I think this is a great idea.
We're even close, but we got to get going.
If Kevin wants to volunteer, I think that's fine, because you two have institutional knowledge, so I think it makes sense and, yeah, I like the plan.
Okay. Well, why don't we do this, is that you can be the select board designee and probably work in concert with Jake and on this? Is that fair enough? And then what we'll do is, is that as the next few meetings go on, maybe we can give a progress report when it's appropriate? You know, and again, I agree.
I think the first step should be agreeing that Mr. Kyra wants it, that's good, but then he sits down with you and the town manager to discuss who and how many they, he should invite into these conversations.
Yeah. I agree. That's probably the first step.
Okay.
Form the committee, right? Form the committee first.
Yeah.
Small committee.
Yeah, small. I agree with that.
Yeah. So we'd probably do that either after the holidays or something. Would that be?
Sure.
Because I'm just thinking, we're, we're looking at the 8th of December now, and you don't want, you know, so I'd say, as we come into the new year, we'll, we'll set up a three-way appointment and go from there.
Sounds good.
All right.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Public comments. Is there any public comments?
Paul's the first speaker emeritus. They have to get your consent.
Public comments are limited to five minutes a person, but if you could state your name and address for the record, sir.
Thank you, Chairman West. Joe Misselli, 25 North Street, Economic Development Chair, but I am not speaking for that committee or the work of that committee tonight. And I'm actually not here to talk about Wilmington. I'm here to talk about our football rival, Tuxbury, because there.
Next speaker?
There's been an issue that's come to my attention over the past couple of months, where we need to come together as two communities, actually. So some of you may be aware of the lithium battery site that's being proposed in Tuxbury, and it's going through a lot of state regulatory agencies, but it's also raising a lot of eyebrows with residents. So I'm here tonight with John Lombardo, a friend of mine from Tuxbury. I've known him for quite a couple of months now, I'd say, but I still want to read his bio and make sure I get all of his hats named correctly. So John is an elected official to the Board of Housing, the Vice Chairman of the Economic Development Committee. He's a veteran. He's an active community resident who has a nonprofit that offers faith-based support, and he's one of two elected officials in his town to publicly speak out on the dangers of the proposed Hillman Lithium Battery Site in pushing for community protections for residents and first responders. So he'll tell you a little bit more about why he's speaking about a Tuxbury issue in Wilmington, because he has given me a lot of details about how this could potentially impact Wilmington if, God forbid, something were to happen. So I'm not going to take all your time tonight, but I do want to welcome John, and he'll tell you a little more about the project and how Wilmington should be paying attention to this issue. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Good evening, sir. If you could just, for the record, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah. It's, we just have a visual for people, so you can follow along easily. Do you mind if I sit here, or do I have to?
Well, we do limit five minutes, so.
I know, yeah. Okay, I'll just stand here. So my name is John Lombardo. My address is 17 Buckingham Road in Tuxbury. And I'm not here to fear monger, just, you know, raise an education lesson and let you guys do information what you may, but I am here tonight as a Tuxbury neighbor from Tuxbury to share what's unfolding in my town and why it might directly, why it will directly impact Wilmington. A massive lithium ion battery storage facility is being proposed in Tuxbury. It's marked as clean energy progress, but these batteries are dangerous chemicals, and the permitting process, I've noticed, is riddled with red flags that undermine safety, transparency, and accountability. And because of where it's being built, Wilmington, I don't feel I can sit this one out and be left in the dark. You know, and you might be wondering, well, what is a battery storage? What is lithium battery storage? So it's essentially a giant industrial-sized version of the rechargeable batteries you already know, the ones on your phone, laptop, or electrical car. The difference is scale. Instead of a single battery, these are a massive bank of batteries packed into shipping container-sized units. The goal is to store electricity for the power grid and release it during times of high demand. On paper, that sounds great, but these batteries are also extremely dangerous because they contain chemicals that can ignite, release toxic gases, and create fires that are difficult to control, and you basically can't even put out with water. This is why containers have safety features built in, but they are not guaranteed to stop a fire or a thermal runaway. And the scale that we're talking about in Tuxbury, I'll give you a quick little visual, it's 16 to 17 million pounds of these batteries. That's equivalent to more than 200 fully loaded semi-trucks. And it's not being built in an isolated industrial zone. It's being planned dangerously close to a senior community of over 1,000 homes, and in the middle of that senior community is a living, a senior living facility with over 90 medical patients and staff. And within yards of that site are small businesses and residential neighborhoods. There is one road in and out, and I know I got short on time, so I just want to show you, I'll be talking about this road right here. This is the senior living community, and that is the senior living center. This is where it's being planned, being built. So you kind of see, I'm talking about this bottleneck here, and evacuation plans, we're going to be touching on. There is, like I said, one road in and out, and if, and this isn't a situation where people can simply shelter in place either. The toxic gases make that impossible. Even an uncontrolled fire in just one or two of those containers could require massive mutual aid responses from Wilmington, Andover, Billrica, Lowell, and North Andover. This is primarily due to that proximity to that senior community and the living center and the type of people that live in there, our elderly. You have to get them out right away. And talking about what is pushing this all, then, on Tuxbury, well, we're going to go back to the Clean Energy Act. Massachusetts passed the Clean Energy Act in 2024 to speed up renewable energy projects. The, you know, the goal sounds great again, but I've seen glaring gaps in the process. There's no evacuation plan required prior to permitting these sites, unlike California, which mandates this. No rules about how close these sites can be to homes, hospitals, schools, senior facilities or daycares. Municipality leadership, if they want to enter into the permitting process as a partner, they're forced to sign non-disclosure agreements, which could leave the public completely left in the dark about what's going on. And the Board of Health is not required in the permitting process despite the chemical and public health risks. So here are some of the findings that I would like to discuss with you at a municipal level. I have noticed on our town website that Wilmington Fire Department was not included in the early safety meetings held earlier this year that we had with Chelmsford, Tuxbury, and Andover Fire Department and the corporation proposing this site. And that means that Wilmington first responders had not had the opportunity to prepare for the unique hazards of a lithium battery storage facility. Your select board, I don't believe, has been properly briefed leaving Wilmington without the chance to review the project in an unbiased lens or to advocate for the resources your community will need if there is an emergency evacuation. And last is, our shared state rep had spoke at our hearing, explained the environmental dangers, so he acknowledged the risk of this location, but I do not know if he's properly notified you guys of the real risks it'll bring to your first responders. If an incident occurs, I do believe Wilmington first responders will be called in, they'll face toxic atmospheres for extended period of times due to that chokehold point of getting ambulances in and out and the medical patients, the medical evacuation we're talking about, requiring, you guys are going to need specialized medical equipment and protections that no municipality currently offers. Because proactive planning was never mandated, we have not mapped out how such an event would impact neighboring towns or what resources would be needed from them. Without those discussions, I do believe Wilmington and your first responders are in danger, and it would be good to be proactive. In closing, you know, I really am just asking the board to look at this with an unbiased lens, you know, if you feel like it's fear mongering, then go into it yourself without that, because I'm not trying to do that right now, I'm just trying to build an awareness of what's going on. And then, you know, demand an evacuation plan prior to permitting, I think that's a reasonable, fair step, and then ask our state representatives why they are not on top of this more at the state level, and that's it, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Okay, is there any other public, oh, sorry.
Oh, yeah, and I'll be welcoming Dawn up here, so Dawn's actually, her family owns businesses down there, and they're, she has family that live in these residents, so she's very active about what's going on, has led a great movement within that, this little group here, so.
If you could just state your name and address for the record, and we do have a five-minute cap on public comments.
Yep, let's start my clock then. Hi, my name is Dawn Sheen, and I live at 100B Star Avenue, Tuxbury. My parents are interveners in this project, meaning that it's going to be the company that's going to the state to try to get this in, the town of Tuxbury, and my parents. We really don't want this in. If you can see why, it's because our family owns all of these buildings here, they live, they built this whole community here, and we own a home right here as well. Interestingly, when this went before the planning board, we were told that they wanted a senior living community here, so that's why we're in this plight, and also it was the town that decided on the one road in, one road out, so total bottleneck. So we're running into a lot of issues in our town not getting supportive, getting support. One thing people fail to realize with this project is that we don't, can't just think batteries, you have to think about the lithium. Lithium is a chemical, this is a chemical facility that's being put in five miles, I think, from you guys, this is highly reactive and flammable, and it is, I don't know if you've ever seen videos of the Tesla car fires or anything like that, I've seen them in a lake, and the fire is still going, because these batteries cannot be put out with any type of water. Actually, water can help them to put off more hydrogen fluoride because of the chemical reactions that happen. But the main issue with these batteries, it's not the fires, it's the smoke, they could emit what's called hydrogen fluoride without it, without even being on fire, it can bring in the pre-combustion phase and still be emitting these gases. Now, some towns are getting really involved in researching these projects, the Braintree Fire Chief, he took a stand, he got these people shut out because he determined that a third of a mile evacuation zone is what's necessary, including for first responders, too. He doesn't want any of his guys in there, and he also determined that his entire staff capacity would be used solely in an evacuation process, and that's without the problems that we have here in Tuxbury. We have Emerald Court that we've talked about, but also, I'm sure you've heard of Blair House, it's a well-known, that is with, a well-known nursing home within Tuxbury, within half a mile of the project, and we have two different daycare centers, one that's being built that's really huge. Think of what that would be like in order to evacuate. We have been told from our town that this is no different from a house fire, that if these burn up, the chemicals will burn up and eventually burn itself out, these are known for starting fires, once it catches on fire, they can catch on fire for another 14 days, couple of weeks, they have to be on fire guard, this is something that can happen spontaneously. So we're headed into court in February, the town, the company, and my parents, we have hired six different experts, so because of that, I have some knowledge about these, I have sat in rooms with chemical engineers and shown projections of what this battery can do, and the smoke went for miles. And unfortunately, when we asked the company to release their data, they refused to, and all of a sudden, they switched batteries. So our, we're in the discovery phase right now, the information was supposed to be in on tomorrow, they switched the batteries, so we're now having to scramble again, but just in carbon monoxide itself, that can be very deadly all around here, certainly not getting burnt up, and sheltering in place is not an option due to the fact that it would involve not having any access to outside air whatsoever, so think about being in an assisted living, and now you don't have any air conditioning or heat, not exactly great. So one thing that's very frustrating, too, is our town has not hired any experts that we have seen, even though there are provisions for the company to pay for them prior to the permitting process. So it, currently, there's also a 2,000-foot buffer zone in front of, at the State House right now, they're trying to get pushed through, just showing that these are really that dangerous, 2,000-foot would basically get no one to be able to live in this pink circle here because of what these batteries are capable of, so certainly just worth another look, thank you.
Thank you very much, much appreciated. Anybody else, are all set? Okay, Mr. Manager, announcements? Anybody, well, actually, does anybody, who's the manager, have announcements?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a, I have a few announcements, actually.
You got the floor.
Okay, thank you. I want to first recognize the Wilmington youth football cheerleading team, formerly the Papuaana U-12, a team that won the national championship on Saturday in Kissimmee, Florida. Not only did the U-12 Level III cheerleading team win nationals, they did so well that they didn't even receive one deduction both days of competition. This is due to the extremely hard work that these cheerleaders put into their sport, and I want to congratulate them and the head coach, Nicole Maginelli. And I don't know if you all did, but I did, on this past Friday, I sat in my chair, and I turned on Channel 38, and I watched a great football game, the Shawshine Tech football team earned their second straight state championship, 14-7 victory over their rival Foxborough High School at Gillette Stadium, it was a great game to watch, let me tell you. The Rams' victory capped off the second straight undefeated season in a back-to-back Super Bowl wins. The Rams finished the season with a perfect 13-0 record, and it was the school's third Super Bowl victory as they won the first one in 2010. Shawshine also beat Foxborough at that last year in the Division V Super Bowl. The Rams now hold the longest active winning streak in the division in the state of Massachusetts, 26 straight wins.
That's awesome.
With no losses in the past two seasons, and all the seniors actually that are graduating this year, the seniors' home record is 30-0.
Wow.
So that's very impressive.
That's awesome.
What these young athletes have done. The Rams haven't lost a game at home since November of, 5th of 2021, and I want to congratulate the head coach, Al Costabile, his 27th season at Shawshine, one of the longest-running head coaches in the state, and there are 16 Wilmington residents that are on the roster, and a big shout-out to Jake Banda, who was the league's MVP, and he's the running back, number 42, I believe, he was all over the place. It was a great game to watch, let me tell you, and I don't think Foxborough scored a touchdown, I think on the replay, it showed that they, they were about a foot shy from the, from the end zone, but I'm just saying. But congratulations to the Shawshine Tech Rams and the Papuaana, or the cheerleaders. Also, my third announcement, I don't know if it's an announcement or a complaint or whatever, I generally, I don't do social media, you know, because there's all things out there, but some of my friends do, and they let me know of certain things, and there's leaves issues out on Hathaway Acres, there's a bunch of bags with leaves and stuff, I actually drove down there before I came here, and I'm wondering when Casella is going to start picking up these leaves in the town of Wilmington, and I want to make sure that they're not being deficient on their contract, but, you know, it was supposed to be November 17th, I believe, was the first pickup, and they didn't come around, then December 2nd, and now I'm, you know, there was, I don't know, there was 59 or 69 different complaints on, on Facebook or social media, whatever you want to call it, and that, they're not, they're not responding, and they've, people have called DPW, and DPW's telling them to call Casella, so, you know, things are going back and forth, but I think, you know, our taxpayers need service in picking those, those leaves up, I drove down there today, and they're everywhere down there.
I have a meeting with Jamie tomorrow, so I'll talk to him about it.
Okay, great, thank you.
I was going to bring that up also, Kevin, you're hearing a lot about it, they have missed two or three pickups over there, and from what we're hearing is that Casella has said, well, you missed your time period, that has to be looked into. I also have a notice. Budding towns, we work together as much as we can, but when people in position in a budding town takes and makes an attack on one of your departments, it causes issues. Judge Ferdinand, from the, what department is he in?
Board of Health. Board of Health, I believe.
Board of Health, has, must have some kind of gripe against our Board of Health, because he's attacked it. He's claimed he has no faith in our Board of Health in the town of Wilmington. I think this is offensive, I think he should be ashamed of himself for attacking another Board of Health, whether they agree or disagree on something is one thing, but to come out publicly and make a statement that he has no support or anything else for our Board of Health is disgusting, and I'm, I don't like it, I don't like any of our departments being attacked by another town, if that's the way they, if that's the way they're going to act to us, then we're going to have to look at things in a different venue, but no attacking each town, that's ridiculous, thank you.
You're welcome. Jake, Lil? Couple of, I'm saying.
No, go ahead.
Okay, a couple of quick things, I just wanted, on a, hopefully a lighter note, wanted to applaud the town and the town departments for the Wilmington tree lighting through the 4th of July committee, Santa Claus came and made sure that the lights were well-lit at the Wilmington Town Commons, that was nice. In addition, the police and fire did the Santa parade, which was very cold out that day, but they, they were out there, I actually got stopped right before them, so got to see the parade go by as they were first starting out, and then it was still dark, and they were still driving around town, so applause to everybody that was involved in that. The other thing also was, is that from the Board of Health, I was going to, the Board of, from the Planning Department, Jane Werbelinski, coordinate a pickup of trash over at Grove and Wild Ave, and it's just amazing, the amount of trash debris and stuff that, you know, people just feel that they can throw couches and fish tanks, I went down there and took a look at it, and, you know, most of that stuff would, you know, the town would gladly pick that stuff up on it, you know, with notice and stuff, you know, you call ahead, and they'll, you know, they'll pick up whatever it is, so there's really no need for, you know, just finding a place to dump, and I was, so I want to applaud the people that, that were involved in that, and I'd like to see if we could get, you know, maybe like either a no trespassing sign or something down there, so that we can at least alert the people that are doing this that, hey, you're being watched, so I don't know if there's, if there's anything we can, you know, the town can do to, I know that you got the, down Wild Ave, you got the, I guess Canalys has the, a train easement or an easement to get down there, and that's a good, that's a lot, I was, I walked down Wild Ave, and I couldn't believe how actually long at Wild Ave actually is, so it was.
I think the first thing that we're hoping to do is to get them to put, them to kill us, to put up a gate, to prevent easy access to vehicles that would have debris from driving in there, where you're basically invisible, like once you're, as you can tell if you went down there, once you're out of sight of that intersection.
Doesn't take much.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're basically, you dump with impunity, but we also may, may think about, you know, getting trail cameras, if there's some, some sites that might be especially attractive to dumpers and trying to catch some license plates, there's some significant fines at the state level to, for illegal dumping.
It's just a shame, I mean, again, nobody knows who's doing this, but it's just a shame that it's being done, so.
But on the positive side, lots of people came out to help with that cleanup.
Yes, yes. And I guess, actually, do you have any public, any announcements?
I had one, but I didn't want to.
No, one, two, go ahead, no.
Yeah, no, this is more of a clarification, it came to my attention at the last meeting that the select board had, that some comments that I made regarding public buildings may have been misconstrued, so I want to take a moment to say that I have nothing but confidence in Dennis Kelly and his staff, and that anything they have done for any building, including the Bezell Building, was done in my direction, they're not certainly operating in a vacuum, and they are doing, and they're, they have done, and they're still doing things to, to make sure that that structure is, is sound and ready to go if the town decides to reuse it, if that's the ultimate decision, so I just wanted to kind of put that out there, thank you very much.
Thank you, and I'll just say on behalf of the.
Mr. Chair, could I ask Town Manager on that question, there's another, I guess, Facebook posting that I saw recently, is that, I know that the, the, you know, the air conditioners were removed, and so, and I know the water was shut off, which is a good thing, and, but they mentioned that, I keep hearing and seeing that the kitchen was removed, is that been removed?
Yeah, so.
And where did that equipment go to?
In February, the, the building was mothballed, because we knew it was vacant after the new sanitation opened, so that's why we drained all the water out of the pipes, and began the contemplation for what it would take to, if the building was decommissioned, and then once there was a vote of this board, we started to look at whether things could be reused, repurposed, or, and so the oil tanks were moved, and the air handlers were removed and taken to the, to public buildings, the kitchen, the pieces of the kitchen that were salvageable, were still in good shape, got moved into the, down to DPW, so they were, nothing was thrown, nothing was thrown away out of that building that was still in, in good nick, so we tried to repurpose everything, so that.
Right, I'm only bringing it up because there's so many different rumors and things happening, and so, just tell the people what's going on, what's the air.
And the roof is not damaged.
Yeah, great.
Roof is not damaged, the building is weather tight, so.
So we can dispel all those rumors and things that are going on.
Thank you, for that opportunity.
Why I don't go on social media.
Neither do I.
All rumors.
Okay, thank you. Any new business from the board? No, I guess the only, the only thing that I'll just say is that, on behalf of the board, and, you know, I'd like to wish everybody a, on behalf, a great Christmas season, holiday season, Happy New Year, that goes, that extends out to the town, town departments, please, and everybody involved with, with making our town a great town it is, so, again, on behalf of the board, I'd just like to wish everyone a happy holiday season and Merry Christmas. With that, Mr. Manager, if you could come up with important dates.
Thank you. So, important dates, December 11th, there is a change from what's in the, in the, in the agenda, Santa's workshop at Town Hall, Santa's going to be running a little late, so that's going to be from here at Town Hall, Room 9, on December 11th, from 6:30 to 8:00. December 24th, Town Hall offices will be closed at noon. December 25th, Town Hall office will be closed for the day. January 1st, Town Hall office will be closed for the day. January 3rd, just a reminder to everyone, that's Sean Allen Collier Day. January third, just a reminder to everyone, that's Sean Allen Collier Day in, in memory of Sean Collier, who lost his life in the response to the aftermath of the Boston, of the Marathon bombings. And so there, as usual, all of the members of the board and anyone who, in the community who wishes to participate, there will be a ceremony being held outside the Public Safety Building on that day.
Do you have a time on that?
I, I will get that out to the exact time. I don't think we've set the exact time yet.
Okay, thank you.
It's usually the first thing in the morning. January fifth to sixteenth, there's going to be curbside collection of Christmas trees. Then, January twelfth will be the meeting of the select board in the new year, here at Town Hall, Room Nine, at seven o'clock. January nineteenth, Martin Luther King Day, Town offices will be closed. And I am hopeful that on January twenty-sixth, this will be incorrect, we will be in the new Town Hall on the twenty-sixth of January for our meeting, but we'll let you know on the twelfth. But it will be at seven o'clock in, in one, some building or another. And that day, we will have the town manager's FY27 budget presentation.
Okay. Well, with, with that, for the last meeting of the calendar year, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So moved. Is there a second? Second? Any discussion? All in favor? Again, thank you very much. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, everyone.
Merry Christmas.